Everyone, my name is Damian Buchanan. I'll be chairing the meeting tonight. Welcome. This is the June meeting of the Pender County Planning Board. Before we get going, I have some remarks and you do a roll call in the minutes and so forth, the agenda. But we'll get started with the roll call. I'm here, President Damian Buchanan. Mr. Satterfield is not with us today. Mr. Jordan?
Here.
Mr. Bowdoin is also not with us. Mr. Pitts?
Present.
Mrs. Mosca?
Present.
Mr. Keeler?
Present.
Thank you. Like I said, everyone, welcome. This body, the Pender County Planning Board, we serve as an appointed board and body. We're appointed by the Pender County Commissioners to make recommendations and decisions concerning specific land use applications. And we have two cases tonight. Before we begin, it is important for everyone to understand some facts that are related to the meeting. For public comment, which everyone here is entitled to public comment if you signed up on the list at the door for each case, there's imposed time limit for all the public hearings, which is limited to three minutes individually or five minutes if you represent a group, like an HOA president. Applicants and the representatives are excluded from any time limitations so that they may have adequate time to explain their case and their reasons for, to advocate for their case. Any comment really needs to be limited to the issues pertaining specifically to whether the rezoning, the text amendment, or the master plan that's being presented should be recommended favorably or unfavorably. Any cases that are heard by this board tonight are guided through the adopted comprehensive plan and the unified development ordinance. These are the policies of Pender County that have been approved over the years by the county commissioners. And the purpose of this hearing is to gather information so that we can make a decision that is fair to the applicant, the neighbors, the community, and respects the procedures and standards established by the unified development ordinance and the statutes of North Carolina. Any cases tonight, whether an approval or denial, will not be the final decision. They'll move forward to the Pender County Commissioners at a later date for final review of the case. Now, one of the cases tonight is a conditional reuse zoning. That means there are certain conditions that can be set, mutually agreed upon conditions, that may be imposed on the master development plan or to offset mitigation of any potential impacts, you know, a specific proposed use may have. Okay, before we get started, does anyone on the board tonight stand to directly benefit from any decision?
No.
No.
No. Okay. All right. We're going to move right to an invocation by Mr. Jordan and a pledge allegiance by Mr. Pitts. So if anyone would please rise.
Please bow your heads. Lord and Savior Jesus Christ, we come before you this evening with humbled hearts and open minds, asking that you will give us the wisdom so that we may make the decisions that will be pleasing to the current and future residents of Pender County. We ask this in your holy name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Well, we need to adopt the agenda. If there's any changes to be recommended or if anyone wants to move forward, I'll entertain a motion or that recommendation.
Make a motion to adopt the agenda as presented?
Second.
All right, we have a first and a second on the agenda. All in favor of that?
Aye.
Aye.
No opposed. We have an adopted agenda. Next, we need to review the minutes from April 1st. And because with that short meeting, we were not able to review that at that point in time, and the May 6 minutes. If everyone's had a chance to review those, unless you have some corrections that need to be made, I'll entertain a motion to adopt both of those minutes.
I'll make a motion to adopt.
I'll make a motion to, I'll make a motion to adopt both meeting minutes.
Second.
Any discussion or changes as you're contemplating? Okay, all in favor of that?
Aye.
No opposed. The minutes are adopted. All right. Is there any general public comment tonight?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Jonathan Lima.
Mr. Lima, and for everyone, please come to the podium. And as you get to there, please give us your name and your address for the record.
Good evening, everyone, and special neighbors. It's always really nice to see the community present in here, to follow what's going on in our community. So I will try to stay on the subject, but we cannot say or make comments like just one one subject without affect the other ones. First of all, I'm not against development and progress in our community. It's always welcome. My only concern is who is actually in charge of the accountability for, for the deviation of the projects. For example, its consequence. In one of the cases that we have today was already mentioned by the community that became a flawed zone, floating zones like since from the Florence. So, and then now we're talking about like put several hundred new units in there. Like, we have current like problems happening where the layout, the landscape, the vegetation is already changing around the neighborhood, and nothing has been done to be repaired around these areas. So, not just that, but also the fluctuation of the population that we have here currently crossing our 17, creating like tremendous, horrible, and by my perspective, result of incompetence of the management of the trafficking. So, it's not the local community which is affected, but the surroundings as well. So, and also the overpopulation of the schools around here. So, every single of these surrounding aspects will be directly impacted, but not in a positive way in our community. So, I think, again, I'm not against the progress and the development around our area, but how, how we are willing to open our community to more space of building, since we not even treating the problems that we would have and severely impacts negatively our community. It's not just people who lives in here, but people who transit as well. And maybe I'm just new here, and I am, but I really would like to hear from, from you, lady and gentlemen. I really would like to hear from, from you, lady and gentlemen, like what has been done. And I believe this type of education, it will help also my neighbors in, in my community to understand that we're not lost here just in a, in a several numbers of new projects and development, which is just coming to not bring better quality for our community. It's damaging our, sorry. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lima.
That's it for public comment?
Thank you. Next on the agenda is our public hearing for item 8.1, Rezone 2025-89. The request rezone one parcel totaling 1.33 acres from residential performance to general business in the Topsail Township. And...
Ms. Marcy Waters?
Ms. Marcy Waters, I'm sorry. You next to that one there, so, thank you.
Yeah. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Tonight I will be presenting on rezon case 2025-89. The applicant, Mr. Clay Harvey, is requesting a zoning map amendment to rezone one parcel totaling approximately 1.33 acres from industrial, or from, excuse me, residential performance to general business. I would also like to note that as of April 15th, CLH Building Group is the owner of the parcel. Moving to our vicinity map, this slide shows a map of the area. Across US Highway 17 is the Holly Shelter game land, and the property is surrounded by Surf City's jurisdiction. The subject parcel is outlined in blue and that arrow is pointing to it as well. Transitioning over to our zoning map, the subject parcel is again outlined in blue. Within the surrounding area, zoning districts include environmental conservation, rural agricultural, general business, and residential performance. There is also that one small sliver of office and residential up at the top of the map there. Adjacent land uses are largely made up of commercial uses and low-density residential. Those nearby commercial uses are concentrated to the north and include a boat storage facility, food pantry, and airstrip. I would also like to point out that that parcel located across US Highway 17 was recently rezoned to general business back in March. Looking at the aerial map of the property and its surrounding area, currently the tract is undeveloped and it is adjacent to existing single-family homes and share the table across from Perkins Drive. Since this is a general use rezoning, all permitted uses within the general business zoning district should be considered when evaluating the proposal. Within the general business zoning district, one residential use and 87 non-residential uses are permitted. An additional 16 non-residential uses are permitted with a special use permit, and dimensional standards for the general business zoning district are outlined in this table to the right. Looking at our traffic data, the only available data we have is volume counts for two locations along US Highway 17 and Perkins Drive. Looking at the future land use map, although the proposed general business zoning is inconsistent with the future land use map with the medium-density residential that is currently there, the parcels located to the north of Perkins Drive are designated as neighborhood mixed use, which supports those commercial uses. If this, this proposal is most consistent with the neighborhood mixed use future land use category, and the map would be updated to reflect this change if this application is approved. The neighborhood mixed use is also most consistent with the adjacent parcels' zone general business. The rezoning is supported by one goal and four policies in the Comprehensive Land Use Plan. The overarching focus of these policies and goals are to encourage and support the siting and development of commercial uses in areas where commercial uses are already in place and where utilities, road infrastructure, and a mix of uses already exists. Given this property's location along US Highway 17 and the commercial use is already present in the area, rezoning the property to general business is compatible. Therefore, staff is recommending approval of the requested rezoning. And I'm happy to turn it over to you all for any questions at this time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions for staff at the moment? Thank you.
Yeah.
We'll move to the public comment, or the applicant's presentation if they have one.
How you doing? I'm Clay Harvey. I don't necessarily have a PowerPoint, but basically what I plan to do with the land is just build flex space for trades. That's what it's, basically what I do is like for HVAC guys, plumbers, electricians, there's a huge shortage of that. And I've just built one over at the, near the airport, Wilmington Airport, and sold it to a granite company and they store all their granite in there. And the trades guy, including myself, there's a huge shortage of places for these people to have, and that's basically what it would be. It's just a square, 5,000 square foot building, two roll-up doors, and some 500 square foot of office space with, where they can back their box fans up and do, basically conduct business.
Thank you.
And that's pretty much it.
Thank you for the explanation. I'll just let everyone keep in mind that even though the applicant tells us what he wants to do as a body, we need to look at every potential use of a rezoning that could potentially be there, because even if this owner does exactly what he says it is, and I have no reason to believe not otherwise, the future user could do something different. That being said, public comment, do we have a list of anyone signed up for this one?
No, sir, no signups.
I'll open it up. Do you guys, any comments or thoughts?
I certainly don't have any issue with this going to general business. It certainly fits with the surrounding area.
Do we have setbacks? Specific?
Questions regarding setbacks and buffers and what GB zoning would then create and require for that, especially, it looks like there's some, there might be a residence there there. So, can you explain that for us?
Yeah, absolutely. So, the dimensional standards, including the minimum setbacks, would be in that table to the right there. And then for buffers, since it would be transitioning from commercial to residential, it would be a C buffer between those uses. And that would be a fully opaque six-foot-high sort of screen between the land uses.
It's very likely that that would be the, the future owner developer that would probably leave the trees there, and that would be acceptable as well?
I believe so. I would defer to, yes, Daniel, for confirmation.
There's more of a buffer for commercial than there is for residential, which is
Thank you.
I have no concerns.
Thank you. Ms. Mosca?
I think it makes sense. It's right on 17.
Right, and we also rezoned that small pie-shaped piece, I guess a year or so ago, and the one across the way. This is becoming a little commercial area as expected along 17, so I'm also in favor of this. Ms. Jordan, any concern for you?
No concern.
Given that we have a consensus here, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the zoning map amendment and to make the, make a finding that the proposal is consistent with the Pender 2.0 comprehensive land use plan. Said approval is reasonable and in the public interest and furthers the goal of Pender 2.0 comprehensive land use plan because it is consistent with the following policies and goals, as noted in the staff report, policy 5.1C, 5.1D, 5.1E, 5.1... Okay. And goal 5.8.
Thank you. We have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion further? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. No opposed. Motion carries. This will go to the county commissioners at which
Let me double check that date. I believe it is, they, their meeting calendar in July's, they only meet once.
Right.
Let me double check that date. July 14th.
Okay. And will the next case, whatever way we go, if it's a denial or approval, also be heard at the same July 14th meeting?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you. All right, give me one second to find my... Okay. The next item is item 8.2, Rezone 2025-84. Request to rezone four parcels totaling approximately 600 acres from the rural agriculture RA zoning district to a conditional zoning district to permit the development of 906 single-family detached homes in the Topsail Township. Mr. Adams, you have the floor.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, good evening. My name's Daniel Adams. I'm the Planning and Community Development Director with the county. As you mentioned, the second case on the agenda this evening is a conditional zoning map amendment application. And Tidewater Associates, Inc. is the applicant, and they submitted this application on behalf of Aside's Construction, Inc. and USA Global Resources. And the proposal is to rezone the property from the rural agricultural zoning district to a conditional zoning district to permit the development of 906 single-family detached dwelling units. As you can see on the vicinity map, the subject property spans three parcels in their entirety and then a portion of a fourth parcel. It's just northeast of the Pender-New Hanover County line, and it sits south and west of the existing Wiley Branch subdivision. Within the middle of that, I just want to note, there is about 115-acre parcel that is not part of this development. The zoning map shows that the entirety of the property is zoned RA or rural agricultural, as is the majority of the property to the north, and then some of the property further east along Island Creek Road. Directly across Island Creek Road, property is zoned PD or planned development, and then the Wiley Branch subdivision to the north, to the northeast is zoned residential performance. The aerial map indicates that the property is undeveloped and predominantly wooded. And you can see further north that, that pattern of that land use pattern is consistent, developed, excuse me, undeveloped and primarily wooded. A couple of pictures to orient the board. This photo was taken on Island Creek Road, looking at the site, just further indicating that the site is undeveloped and primarily wooded. And then this photo is actually taken from the Wiley Branch subdivision, looking at the northernmost point of access to the site from South Ballast Stone Lane. And I'll have a photo of the sketch plan here momentarily that will show you where this photo was taken. So, the photo that I just referenced was taken from the northernmost red circle there, but I want to highlight a couple of things here as it relates to access. So, the proposal is for 906 single-family homes. That's the only use being proposed. And there are four points of access to the development, two on Island Creek Road, and then two through the existing Wiley, Wiley Branch subdivision. Now, the applicant has demonstrated connectivity and has shown compliance with the UDO by demonstrating interconnectivity in several locations. So, the two sites that I showed on the previous slide that connect to the existing Wiley Branch subdivision, and then five points of interconnectivity to that parcel, that roughly 115-acre parcel in the middle of the prop, in the middle of the site, that is not part of the project. If it is developed in the future, there are five points of interconnectivity. If this property were to be developed as a by-right project, buffers would not be required. Buffers are not required for residential development in the RA or RP zoning district. However, the applicant has proposed buffers around the perimeter of the site and around the perimeter of that 115-acre parcel in the middle of the site. As this is a conditional use rezoning, dimensional standards are set through this process, and the applicant has proposed the following dimensional standards: 25-foot front yard setback, 20-foot rear yard setback, and an eight-foot side yard setback with a minimum lot size of 12,000 square feet. 12,000 square foot minimum lot size is consistent with the residential performance zoning district minimum lot size when water and sewer is available. Want to talk about density for a moment. Density is calculated separately for conditional zoning districts and it is in all other zoning districts. Density in conditional districts is more of a gross calculation where you take the total number of units divided by the total acreage of the site. Density in all other zoning districts is a net density calculation where you take the total acreage of the site and you subtract out things like non-residential development, open space, wetlands, right-of-way, and then you take that buildable area, take the total number of units and divide it by that total buildable area. Now, the future land use map is integral in determining density allocation in conditional zoning districts, and this project spans two future land use categories. So, low-density residential is shown in orange on the screen, and then rural agriculture is shown as the beige color on the screen. Now, rural agriculture, as defined in the Comprehensive Land Use Plan, defines an appropriate density as one dwelling unit per acre. Low, low-density residential, as defined in the Comprehensive Land Use Plan, finds that two units an acre or less is an appropriate density. Now, as I was talking about that gross density calculation, if you simply take 906 units and divide it by 600 acres, you'd a density calculation of 1.51 units per acre. If you factor, if you subtract out things like wetlands, and look at how the code defines density calculations in conditional districts, you're looking at about 2.04 units per acre. The North Carolina Department of Transportation uses the annual average daily traffic count as a metric to analyze how many trips are taken on a, on a single roadway in a single day averaged over the span of a year. And then they compare that against the planned capacity for the roadway and give a volume-to-capacity ratio. So, if you look at Island Creek Road, basically from the project site to the New Hanover County line, the volume is 5,100 trips per day. And from the project site north and east, the volume is 5,400 trips per day with a planned capacity of 10,978. So, you have a volume-to-capacity ratio of .46 and .49, meaning this road has capacity to handle increases in trips. Now, I will note that the development as proposed at full build shows 7,664 trips, 553 of which would be during AM peak hours, and 789 of which would be during PM peak hours. Now, again, that is at full build. This is a proposed phased development, and a TIA, a traffic impact analysis, will be required if this development is approved. And that traffic impact analysis will talk about the roadway improvements that will have to be made as the phases of this development are built out. Another important thing to talk about is schools. Pender County Schools is a member of the Technical Review Committee for the county, and they provide comments on residential development proposals. They've noted that residential developments generate .4 students per household. So, with 906 households proposed, that's approximately 362 students added to the following schools as currently districted. That's South Topsail Elementary, which is currently over capacity by 110 students; Topsail Middle School, currently over capacity by 106 students; and Topsail High School, currently over capacity by 435 students. Also want to note the environmental concerns on the site. You can see the, the two parcels to the north and west are constrained by the 100-year flood zone, referred to as the special flood hazard area. Across the site, there are approximately 224 acres of special flood hazard area. Now, the developer, through the design team, mostly kept the lots out of the flood zone, but staff is recommending that there be a condition of approval that no homes be developed in the 1% or .2% annual chance flood zone. So, the 1% flood zone is the area in blue shown on the screen is often referred to as the 100-year flood zone, meaning it has a 1% annual chance of flooding based on data provided by FEMA. The yellow area is the .2% annual chance flood zone, often referred to as the 500-year flood zone. The county does not currently regulate development... The county does not currently regulate development in the five-hundred-year flood zone with floodplain development regulations. So for example, in the hundred-year flood zone, if you are proposing to build a house, you may have to elevate that house. Those requirements are not in effect for the five-hundred-year flood zone. As required by the UDO, the applicant did hold a public input meeting here in the Hampstead Annex on March thirteenth. They submitted a report of that meeting to staff and noted that twenty-nine members of the community attended, and discussion included transportation infrastructure, buffers, amenities, and the construction timeline. Again, as I've already mentioned, this project spans two future land use categories, rural agriculture and low-density residential. And I want to talk a little bit more about each of those future land use categories, and if I may read a brief synopsis from the comprehensive plan of description of each of those categories. So the rural agriculture future land use category supports and protects Pender County's agricultural areas. These areas are an essential part of the county's economy and agricultural heritage. Within the rural agriculture future land use category, agricultural uses are highly encouraged. Preservation of prime farmland soils for continued prosperity of farming and forestry operations should be considered. Development density within this category is one dwelling unit an acre or less. And as you can see on the screen, desired uses include single-family detached dwellings, manufactured homes, and parks and parks recreation and open space. The comprehensive plan also finds that inappropriate uses are things like single-family attached dwellings such as townhomes or duplexes, multifamily residential, most commercial office and institutional uses as well as industrial uses. For low-density residential, the comprehensive land use plan describes low-density residential as being located on the fringe of medium-density residential uses and within existing single-family neighborhoods. These areas are typically established single-family neighborhoods with a low-density residential development pattern. Appropriate uses include single-family dwellings and neighborhood-scale institutional facilities, development density of two units an acre or less. And as you can see on the screen, desired uses are similar, single-family detached, recreation parks and open space, and then things like single-family attached that are part of a master-planned community would also be appropriate. Inappropriate uses are also fairly similar, things like most non-residential development, multifamily residential, and then single-family dwellings attached that are not part of a master-planned community. Staff evaluated the proposal, compared it to the UDO and the comprehensive land use plan, and formed a recommendation of denial. The development is inconsistent with the density deemed appropriate by the future land use map in the rural agriculture future land use category. It's also proposed in an area where the school system is already overcrowded. It's in close proximity to the special flood hazard area. And lastly, it conflicts with two goals, one objective, and three policies within the comprehensive land use plan, and those policies, goal and objective are in the staff report, and I'm happy to read through them should the board like that. Now, if this board is to recommend approval of this proposal, staff is recommending the following conditions of approval, which include conditions related to stormwater, sidewalks, the school bus stop, not building homes in the flood zone, ensuring roadway connectivity is established, and then not allowing construction traffic through the existing Wiley Branch subdivision. That concludes my presentation, I'm happy to answer any questions from the board. The owner does have some representatives here this evening, I believe, would like to present the case to the board as well.
Thank you, Mr. Adams.
Yes, sir.
Before the applicant comes and speaks, we have the public comment, I do have a few questions and maybe some others to do as well. I would like, you mentioned many things about conditions, or they couldn't do this in RA, but they can do the buffers and traffic conditions. Can we start quickly so everyone understands that this six hundred acres, even though it has wetlands and some flooding, from your opinion, what is the by right? What they can do without coming for approval, they can just come to you by state right, by their property rights, and build there?
So, the property in its entirety is zoned rural agricultural, allows for a minimum lot size of one acre. So if you consider six hundred acres with a minimum lot size of one acre, you're looking at six hundred units. But we also have to factor in things like right-of-way, and so normally, as a baseline, and there may be folks from the applicant's team who can provide a better estimate, but we generally factor in twenty percent of the space for that to also account for wetlands, you would be looking at four hundred and fifty to four hundred and eighty units.
Thank you. So with that four hundred and fifty to four hundred and eighty, you mentioned a couple of times about this would not be required if developed by right, but this condition and what's being proposed is something different. Can you, it was buffers, there were, I believe, additional traffic measures that could be, I'm not sure if we can. You just tell me what different conditions could be.
Yeah, so buffers in particular is one, but the most important thing is, if this project were developed by right, we would, we would not be having this hearing, and to clarify for the folks in the audience and members at home, by right development means every piece of property in the county has a zoning district, and that zoning district prescribes how the property can be developed and how it can be used. If you intend to develop your property as prescribed by the code, that is a by right development, meaning you have the right to develop in that way. The reason we are here this evening is because the developer wants to change the zoning district of their property, and to do that, they have to have a public hearing with the planning board, and then ultimately a decision made by the Board of Commissioners whether or not to allow that. So if this project were developed by right in the rural agricultural zoning district, buffers would not be required. Now, a traffic impact analysis would, would probably still be triggered due to the size of a development of, you know, four hundred to five hundred homes. But some of the requirements, or some of the conditions of approval about staying out of the flood zone would not be able to be placed on the, on the developer. As the name implies, it's a conditional rezoning, so the applicant, the owner, have an opportunity to agree with the Board of Commissioners on conditions of approval for the project.
Would those two hundred and twenty-four acres of conservation or F-S-F-H-A be buildable? Or only if they put them on stilts?
Right, there is no, there, folks often think that in a flood zone, things cannot be built, that is not the case. You can build in a flood zone, there are just additional requirements. Now, some of that flood zone also overlaps with wetlands. So if you look at it in a vacuum, simply a flood zone does not prohibit someone from building, it just establishes additional regulations that they have to meet to build. Wetlands regulations are not enforced by the county, that would be a Corps of Engineers regulatory authority, and so I'm not as familiar with their permitting process, but it, it tends to be that it is prohibitive to develop.
The estimation by right could be in that three hundred to three hundred and fifty homes on the one acre, considering conservation?
Certainly, yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Adams, the, just going back to reiterate that there is, this property can be developed whether we say no or not.
That's correct.
To a certain degree of what you described, four hundred and eighty homes, maybe it's less due to constrictions, but they can do that, and it's just what the UDO says. The conditional zoning, they have an ask, but we can, you know, do many things with that, because we can set conditions as long as state law allows us to, and that could potentially be a benefit or address issues in the community. Maybe it's not nine hundred homes, but there are things that can be done that would not be able to be done if it was just a by right process.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Adams? Thank you. If the applicant wants to come up and if he has a presentation or address the board?
Good evening, um, let's see, okay, too close. I'm Scott Holmes from the law firm of Murkison, Taylor &amp; Gibson. On behalf of the applicant, we appreciate the opportunity to present this project to you. We do feel it has some, some important opportunities for the county. I'll introduce the rest of our team in a second, and they can expand on a lot of those details. But based on the report from staff, I wanted to hit a few points and, and just address those initially. So first, I think it's critical to emphasize that the staff report has to be viewed in terms of this as being a twelve-to-fifteen-year, you know, potentially even longer project. This is, there are concerns about existing infrastructure, and we do understand those, and I know those are very present. But the impact from this would be a lot more gradual, I mean, it's, it sounds, it sounds heavier than it is. This is something that's going to take a lot of time. And during that time, the next twelve or fifteen years, I mean, there's going to be a need for housing, and this project can help address that need, and that's what we're trying to do. I mean, as an example, we've already been at this for probably almost two years, just to get to this point. If we obtained a favorable result on the rezoning, we're probably still about two years from having any homeowners of any kind. So that, as far as impacts on infrastructure, you know, due to an approval of the rezoning, there is nothing for two or three years, most likely. After those further planning stages have been completed, the project would then have a build-out period of another ten to fifteen years with a small portion of the lots coming online each year. And, you know, from our experience, we've seen a lot of, of projects of this size in this county and others. You know, that phased growth is usually manageable. Now again, I'm not trying to lighten any of the other issues, but I just want to emphasize that if you, if you just stop allowing some developments to move forward, you're not necessarily serving your future needs any better. The, with a long lead-time project like this, it's just tough to say that you're going to turn away the investment that it would bring based on the current state of the infrastructure, because that will be changing. In fact, a denial can help crimp the economic growth, it can hamstring the county's ability to solve those infrastructure problems in the future. So projects like this are what you really need to have that investment and help with those long-term infrastructure improvements, and that's just what we wanted to, to emphasize. Secondly, you might have guessed this, but we respectfully disagree with staff's recommendation and the interpretation on the future land use plan and the comprehensive land use plan. We strongly believe that what we've proposed is consistent with both of those plans and their goals and their objectives. So here we have the, the future land use map. You can see, when you compare that with the site plan that has been proposed, the areas that are shown for low-density residential, which, you know, even under whichever calculation you want to use, we basically are meeting, you're getting two units an acre, that's where most of the units are. Then we're preserving the back areas that are within the rural agricultural, particularly the natural resources. I mean, this is the kind of thing that, that planning needs to have done. This board itself, during some of your own discussions, has already noted that designating a use on a parcel based on property lines is an inexact science. You know, we feel that we are, we are, single-family residential is what we're proposing, and that's what, in my mind, the future land use map is showing you. And to the best of our ability, it might not match up exactly with the property lines for the parcels, but again, that's an inexact science. We just don't feel that it's inconsistent with, with the future land use plan. Lastly, just to say that we strongly feel that it's a great opportunity for the county, and not just because it has the sort of long-term economic investment that the Board of Commissioners has mentioned they are seeking. If we're able to move forward, part of our deal is we have to acquire a lot of those natural resources in the back, and those will be preserved, and they have a great potential for use for parks, recreation, for water access to the northeast Cape Fear coming down that way. But unfortunately, getting the property under contract with a foreign seller has been a difficult process. And if we're not able to obtain the rezoning, you know, we, we likely have to walk away from that. If we're not able to obtain the rezoning, will, those opportunities, the, the community enhancement that we can work on will be lost. And we do, we don't know what happens with the property after that point, of course. So while we're excited to bring this to you for your review, I think we really need your help, and we could appreciate any creativity you have. As you've said, a conditional zoning allows for some additional or, or different ways to go at it, and we're open to those, because we don't want to lose the opportunity, and we don't want you guys to lose the opportunity. I would also note, and maybe we'll, we'll hear some differing voices, but the applicant is not a nationwide builder with no local ties. Mr. Anthony Sides, he's a self-made businessman, he was born and raised in Onslow County. The company works hard to provide good quality homes at an affordable price. Of course, working in Onslow, you know, that's a lot of military families that they've worked with. He's trying to invest in this community for now, not just for now, but for the next fifteen-plus years. He's certainly willing to discuss what we can do to foster a public-private partnership and further, and help with what the county needs. But we need the rezoning to move forward and acquire this property in order to, to work towards those goals. There's more time to work on those opportunities, and as you hear, we, we've already tried to address some of them to the best we could, but as you know, there has been some staff changeovers and a lot of, it's been a difficult process to try and address those. Unfortunately, at this point, we're out of time under that contract, so we really need help to try and get through this first stage of the process. With that said, our team tonight, we have Josh Edmondson, Jonathan McDaniel from Tidewater Associates, they're the engineers. I also have Caleb Rash from my firm, and Josh is up next to get into the details and can answer a lot more questions for, Josh?
Mr. Chairman, Planning Board, I'm Josh Evans at Tidewater Associates. First off, just like to say, obviously, respect is all you and staff, I have to do in your positions. As somebody that worked in local government and planning departments for sixteen years, sometimes you catch a lot of, a lot of flack and a lot of stuff you don't like to catch, but just respect what you guys do. Even though we're here, disagreeing with staff to some extent, we do respect the job you guys do and appreciate you taking time to hear from us. Do you want to reemphasize this is, as you pointed out, a conditional rezoning, not a site plan approval? We've presented, what we presented is a site plan, it's really more of a concept plan at this point. As staff has said, final development plans and site plans would come further down the road, where we're really getting into a lot of the details that, that hammer out a lot of concerns that, that you guys and maybe even the public will have. A variation of this project was presented about a year and a half ago. At that time, it was put on hold because of concerns from an initial community meeting and concerns from staff. Initially, there, the parcel in the, to the north that was directly adjacent to existing Wiley Branch, our client owns that parcel, and it was to be phase five and six of Wiley Branch. We were going through a rezoning process, conditional rezoning process at that time, and again, had concerns, valid concerns from neighbors, and really valid concerns from staff, especially fire marshal when it come to access. With new fire code due to the length of Haber Sham, our main entrance there, we needed to provide a, another access a half mile away from our current entrance on Island Creek Road. And so obviously, in order to do that, that meant we had to look at other properties. In order to be a half mile from Haber Sham Road, the closest property, obviously, with these parcels to the west- these parcels to the west. And again, trying to buy, you know, 50 or 60-foot wide strip just for right-of-way is not, not something that the sellers or owners of these properties are interested, interested in, nor cost-effective for the developer. So that is how we came to this point in obtaining, trying to obtain these other two parcels. One is to, again, get access to the back of that initial, or of the Phase Five, Phase Six of Wiley Branch. And in doing so, again, we had concerns from community, then we had concern, concerns from community members at our last community meeting, concerns from staff, just some ways we've tried to address some of those concerns. There was a concern about additional construction traffic on Haber Sham. We obviously, as a condition, have agreed to use only this new development for all construction traffic within this new portion, so construction traffic would not go into the existing Wiley Branch neighborhood. Again, we have imposed or provided a 20-foot buffer around the entirety of the property, again, just trying to provide some buffering from adjacent uses, not only Wiley Branch, but all properties around this development. Also, you know, we initially submitted, this was submitted with the intent of being in addition to Wiley Branch, with shared amenities with, with Wiley Branch and this new development. In talking with many of the property owners, this will no longer be the case, this will be a separate development entirely. It will have its own HOA, own amenities, open space, walking trails, boat access, and again, I would just like to reiterate, this is not, will not be a portion of Wiley Branch. Wiley Branch will have their own amenity site, and this development will operate under its own HOA and separate amenities. You know, there was concerns about Island Creek Road, obviously, and what this means for Island Creek Road. We do have a TIA scoping document that has been approved by the WMPO, so when we get to that point, if we get to that point of site plan supplemental with this proposal, our TIA will have to file that scoping document, and any and all improvements that are, have to be made along Island Creek will be made when necessary as part of that phased development. Additionally, and we'll talk more about this, I'll get more into this here in a second, in a second concept that we proposed in talking with the county, in which I'm happy to pass that out if you guys are interested, so you can see. We were proposing 50 acres to be dedicated as a county park in the rear of this property for county park purposes. There was concern about access to that, so we can, if, if that is still on the table, if the county still desires that and still is willing to work with us on that, we are willing to upgrade and make that right-of-way larger, leading to this portion of property due to the increase in traffic that may be drawn to that particular area due to the county park. In addition to proposed conditions, we have tried to go above and beyond to make accommodations to the county. You know, the county preference for conditional rezoning over straight rezoning. We were told by staff, the county commissioners gave an directive back last year requiring all residential rezonings to use the conditional rezoning process, so all residential rezonings to use a conditional rezoning process. Even though we could, would and could comply with the requirements in residential performance district, I think one or two of our setbacks may vary potentially. However, all other aspects of our project could have complied with just a RP rezoning rather than conditional. However, we do understand that in this case, it may be more advantageous to us to have this conditional rezoning, so we can discuss concerns, put conditions on the project if, again, you guys have conditions, commissioners had, neighbors had issues, there are ways, because of conditional process, we can work through those things. I think the, the two big items I'd like to hit on, when we initially submitted, county staff asked, is there anything we could do to, for, to create public use, or schools, or anything of that nature, because we understand schools are a huge, huge issue. We went back, we worked tirelessly to provide a school site to the county. Now, this school site was 33 acres. No wetlands or flood zone on this potential part of the property. We've all seen towards the rear, there are, there are wetlands and flood zone back there, and obviously, for a school site, that's not preferable. So this 33 acres is entirely developed, no wetlands, no flood zone on site, and it's some of the highest elevations out in this entire area on this parcel. We submitted that and told this wouldn't work because we needed 50 acres. So we went back and redesigned and add the additional 50 acres to the rear of the property for a community park area, to be used as community facility however deemed necessary. And even though the staff pointed out that Objective 4.6, which reads, which they deemed inconsistent, reads, "Ensure adequate student space in Pender County Public Schools and encourage co-location of community facilities." We proposed 83 acres of combined community facilities for a school site and county park facilities. Again, to us, that seemed like we, by that objective, we definitely meet that objective in what we're trying to do and provide that 83 acres. Again, staff, staff told us that, no, now we needed 100 acres, which 100 acres on this site is just absolutely, probably out of the question. We are more than willing to continue to strive towards that 50-acre goal, if feasible. We'd have to look at, again, we have to look at options, but given the school the best land available, where they're not worried about impacts to wetlands, flood zone, and high ground was our main concern and our main focus, and where we have designated is exactly that spot. And again, I've already mentioned this, we also had 50 acres designated as county park space. Again, we are more than willing to continue to have this designated as county park space as part of this proposed request, even though we were told that it was not of any interest. Specifically, just some of the objections from staff, the land use plan, again, Scott touched on that a little bit, site plan generally tracks with the LUP due to not building in that northwest corner. And obviously, you guys know this, and it's outlined in the LUP, there is flexibility under the UDO when the future land map might not align with their rezoning request. Even though it's inconsistent, if the zoning is deemed consistent, obviously, you can automatically trigger a future update, a update to your future land use plan if you deem the rezoning to be consistent with the general area. The school board resolution, I'm not sure if you provided a packet of that. It was requested to the county, went to the county commissioners to oppose additional high-density residential units before plans to provide sound education of students are in place. Per the land use plan, which our development, we feel our development is consistent with, the low-density residential category is two units an acre or less, understanding this is based on, understanding this is based on all acres being deemed consistent with the land use plan. Based on our calculation, if the entirety of all these parcels, acres we're talking about were low-density residential, in which we feel they fit that category, based on that gross calculation Daniel was talking about, this would allow about 982 units per our calculation, and we're requesting 906. Again, we feel like we're a low-density development. I've heard it, we've heard it referred to since the beginning as a higher-density development. Again, it's low-density per the, per the county ordinance, it seems to be low-density. You know, we have tried to help with solutions to staff. Again, we, we preferred that you guys also have been presented concept two, but that was not included in the packet for you. Again, if I can, I'd be happy to share that with you if you guys are interested. However, this board or any, or commissioners take this school, school capacity decision and resolution into account, what it legally can't do is treat this resolution as a de facto moratorium on residential development, nor should it. The county commissioners make development policy, not the school board. This is a phased project over at least 10 years, more than likely 15 years. This is a long time for resolving capacity issues. The way not to resolve capacity issues is to reject private investment in the county needed for long-term solutions, especially when we feel like we've tried to provide solutions to help mitigate some of these impacts that we've discussed. When it comes to environmental flooding, you know, we have state, not only Pender County regulations to comply with, but state and federal regulations to comply with in regard to flooding prevention and stormwater runoff. We have 137 of acres of passive open space and 46 acres of active open space in our development plan. You know, flooding is something we all choose to deal with living by the coast and at the coast, but not every flood event is a result of new development. And then I just wanted to go over, lastly, just kind of finishing here, factors of approval. Obviously, there's, we know there's specific things you guys look at, and just wanted to state why we think we fall in line with these. Whether the entire range of uses permitted by the proposed change would be appropriate to the area concerned. And then you have five kind of items you guys look at. Detrimental to natural environment, adversely affect health, safety, and welfare of residents, detrimental to adjacent uses and developments, materially or adversely affect the character of general neighborhood, and be reasonable as it relates to public interest. Again, when you review the existing zoning, land uses, development patterns, density, intensity of existing developments along Island Creek Road and in this general area, our request is for single-family uses with accompanying accessory uses. These type of uses, sized houses, sized lots are already found in this area and found to have been appropriate in this area per past and recent approved changes. Whether adequate public facilities exist or are planned and can be reasonably provided to serve needs of any permitted uses likely to be constructed. Again, adequate public facilities in our mind are available or will be provided when appropriate for uses proposed to be constructed. Examples, after our TIA is submitted, it'll be very clear on any transportation improvements that have to be made along Island Creek, which those improvements hopefully not only are good for new development, but they should address existing conditions that aren't up to standard as well. Booster pump station will be put in place to help any drop in water pressure out in this area. And lastly, we, again, we've tried from schools best we can, and will continue to try as best we can to work with the county if they so choose to provide acreage for school site, for community facilities out here as part of this development. Whether the proposed change is consistent with the county's comprehensive land use plan and other adopted land use, and other adopted land use documents. Again, we feel this proposal is consistent with the intent on land use plan. And again, just as staff outlined their five or, believe five or six points that they felt inconsistent, this is why we feel they are consistent. Goal 5.1, manage the physical growth and development of Pender County by encouraging more intensive land uses in key locations identified for such growth while preserving and protecting the unique physical character, social aspects of the rural heritage and coastal habitat that make the county a unique place to live. I would say that's exactly what we're trying to do. Per definition of low-density is outlined in the land use plan, two units or less an acre, this project should be classified as low-density, accompanied by the fact that acres and acres, hundreds of acres of wetland and floodplains are being preserved. Goal 5.8, Thompson area planning, Thompson planning area, protect existing single-family neighborhoods and coastal habitats from the expansion of incompatible land uses while focusing more intensive growth and development in key locations along the US-17 corridor in accordance with US-17 bypass and collector street plan. Again, we feel like our request is identical to adjacent developments with identical and/or intensive, more intensive land uses, including the PD of across the street, which I believe is over 2,000 units in this particular area. You know, our intensity and density is compatible to that of these adjacent and existing zoning and land use categories. Objective 4.6, ensure adequate student space in Pender County Public Schools and encourage co-location of community facilities. Again, we tried, we tried to encourage by providing 83 acres of, of community space for schools and community parks that can be used by the schools. Land use plan consistency, the county generally requires that any official land use and development-related actions remain consistent with the policy adopted in this plan and other applicable plan. Any actions that are inconsistent with such plan shall require a statement from the Planning Board and Board of Commissioners approving such decisions. I would say our request is consistent with policies and development patterns that have been approved within this community. Density and development standards are consistent with adjacent uses, including our self-imposed buffering. Coordination with infrastructure, again, this is just a restatement of earlier, but we have, we have or will be providing adequate facilities, whether it's transportation, water, sewer. Again, we've tried with schools. And the last policy was residential development. The county supports a range of housing types and development at appropriate densities and locations that are compatible with their surroundings and are in accordance with the future land use map. Request is consistent with and compatible to existing development, permitted uses and densities at this location based on surrounding zoning and land use categories. In reviewing the future land use map, it appears line classifications were drawn based on existing parcel boundaries, and not necessarily where the classification really lies between developable and natural land, especially in discussing those two rear properties. So lower densities were assigned to the back parcels, and these parcels in their entirety, as that made sense for majority of the area, but not necessarily for the front portions of the two rear parcels, which fit the low-density residential classification. Most of this area and adjacent areas are stated, areas as stated were area, were assigned low-density residential. There are two conditions that we would like to have more discussion on. Condition, the project shall be designed such that the post-development runoff from the project be more than 10%, more than 10% than the pre-development runoff for the 10, 25, 50-year event, and be analyzed for the 100-year event. Again, this, the first we heard of this commission was, condition was when we received a staff report, so we would have liked to have a little more time to discuss this with staff. You know, we don't agree with this condition, we would suggest adding high-density portions of the project shall be subject to the above, because projects that meet NCDEQ, low-density, are not required to construct stormwater controls. The next one, no homes shall be developed within the 1% or 2% annual chance of flood zones. Again, the, the number of homes that actually would be in there are very low, and very low. Now, there may be 100-year on some of the lots, but the majority of these homes are going to be developed outside of all flood zone. And again, this is the first we heard of this particular, this condition, which we believe is a bit excessive. Obviously, Pender County flood prevention ordinance regulates development in the floodplain. As with all other developments, you know, we were just questioning why we were being subject to this when there are guidelines for the development in a floodplain, not only at a local level, but the national level. So we would ask that we look at that condition again as, and have some more discussion about that condition. And just finishing up, we're glad residents of existing Wiley Branch are here to share our thoughts with you guys. Again, we've, we've tried to address some of their concerns, but having community members involved just like this is what the county needs. Obviously, they're here because the applicant built their community that they live in. Not too long ago, they were in a new development that someone else opposed, for sure. Thank goodness the project got approved, otherwise, you know, they, they wouldn't be here tonight. All we ask is that you judge this project on its merits as required by the UDO, and take into account that our proposed conditions already address the main concerns of the neighbors. So we'll be happy, myself or my colleague, Mr. McDaniel, will be happy to answer any questions, technical questions that you have now or that may come up later, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I didn't get your name, I apologize.
Josh Edmondson.
Mr. Edmonds.
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Edmonds, I want a, a couple of things before you go or let the board ask you a couple of questions, but at one point you made about moratorium. There is no moratorium in Pender County or residential construction or any type of construction. So I just wanna make sure, you made a comment about a de facto moratorium, but there is no moratorium in Pender County.
Yeah, we, we, we understand that. We simply said it can't be treated as a de facto moratorium.
Well, there's no moratorium in Pender County, so it is not. Um, and the only way a county or municipality could enforce a moratorium in housing is for some type of public safety event such as a lack of capacity in a sewer system. So I just wanna make sure that was clear, that there's, there's no moratorium in Pender County.
Yeah, perfectly clear, yes, sir.
Um, you, you asked for two, reviews of two conditions or one condition? You had mentioned the runoff question.
Yeah, we, well, so, obviously flood zone, um, we do not agree with that, like to have more discussion on that. There was a condition about stormwater and we're not opposed to it, we just would like to add some additional verbiage to it, um, to make it match what state permitting is gonna require us to do.
Okay, I just wanna make sure there's two, I only heard one.
Yes, sir.
This planning board, you know, for a while was pushing for these conditional zoning because we saw the, the move towards higher density, but there was a lack of, of public benefit. Now, you've clearly mentioned this land, okay? But that land is not part of our case tonight, so, uh, unless you're pointing something out, some type of land or some type of, uh, dedicated land in your development.
I mean, I can, I can show you, we were not allowed to present that tonight because we were told by staff if we couldn't provide a hundred acres, that we could either scratch this proposal or move on with what we have. I'm happy to show you, um, concept two, so you can see what we were trying to work towards. Um, now, that density was increased, but after discussion today, um, we would back down our density to our current proposal of nine hundred and six with that. Um, but I'm more than happy to, if, if you're, um, open to it, to at least show you the layout that showed the, um, public park space and the, uh, school location spot that we were working with staff on.
Okay, we may like to see that, but again, we have no input on what you dedicate or what the county accepts, whether it's a park or a school or the school system, so I just wanna make that clear, that we don't do those types of agreements with developers at all.
Yeah, I, I understand. We, we just wanna make, we obviously wanna make clear, me on the record, that, um, we could not present that to you tonight because of staff directive.
Certainly, and I, I do think that per, trying to provide a community benefit with an ask is kinda what that conditional zoning.
Yeah.
Why we went that way.
Yes, sir.
So I do think, while I don't know the details, right? But what you're saying is something that we are looking for the development community to do. Now, again, not in any conversation about your project prior to tonight. Uh, none of us have, we've reviewed it for like a week now, and none of us have even discussed this until right now. Um, so we unfortunately cannot, that's not part of our case to review tonight, and I just wanna make sure that's, we understand that, but I do wanna say that I think that that is the type of direction we would like to see from the development community when looking at higher densities, to try to find ways to benefit the community, uh, to mitigate that impact, so.
Definitely, and like I said, we just wanted you guys to know we were trying, so.
Yes.
Yep.
I appreciate that.
Yep.
Uh, thank you, I'm sure we'll have you come back up.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, Mr. Edmondson or Mr. Holmes, did y'all have anyone else from your team that wanted to present? I know Mr. Rash signed up, I believe Mr. McDaniel did too, but I can skip them as I go through. Let me come back.
Okay.
Uh, Scott Jones.
My name is Scott Jones, I live at two five eight West Broughton Lane, and I am directly affected by all of this. First and foremost, I'd like to talk that Wiley Branch is already big. Um, we've got two hundred and thirty-ish, I don't know the exact number, I asked and someone could not give me that. We got two hundred and thirty homes, now you wanna put nine hundred more homes. The environment, uh, for the wildlife is already being affected already with the deer on Island Creek Road. The traffic, we already, it's already crazy, and now you wanna add nine hundred more homes and the traffic, they say this is gonna double, it's gonna double, it's gonna triple, quadruple I think even with, with traffic signals and stuff like that, still would be affected That's about all I got right now.
Katie Franklin. Lauren Hallagarda.
Very impressed you got that right.
You have good handwriting.
My name is Lauren Hallagarda, I live at one thirteen Chippewa Lane in Wiley Branch. Um, as has been said, there are approximately about two hundred and thirty homes in Wiley Branch currently. Um, national stats, I haven't counted up or taken a poll of how many children there are in our neighborhood, um, but national stats would put it at about a hundred and fifty-one children. Uh, Thompson schools, as you know, are already overwhelmed, overcrowded, the bus system is overwhelmed and unsuitable to support our current enrollment. If you are a parent to a school-aged child, then you know that it is a routine occurrence to receive text notifications about buses being one to two hours late with less than twelve hours notice. This is completely unacceptable for our current enrollment. Nine hundred and six homes will bring approximately in the range of six hundred more children that our school district is woefully unprepared to bus to our current schools. Based on this alone, it would be irresponsible to approve the rezone request. While I'm not a subject matter expert on the impact on our watershed and environmental aspects, um, I do have firsthand experience, having lived in, um, Belvedere Development in Hampstead, and we, the impact that this conditional zoning request would have would be detrimental to our environment surrounding these parcels, our water and flooding. The only additional comment I wanted to make was that while it is not relevant to this particular request, um, it has been discussed that, um, the builder is doing, is attempting to do what is in the best interests of the residents. Um, I don't believe they have proven good faith to the current and future residents. We have been promised a pool for many years, um, and they have not demonstrated that they are willing and able to deliver what was included and marketed along with our properties. That's all.
Thank you.
Hi, um, so I really, I mean, my only point's here.
Ms. Lash, just state your name and your address for the record.
Oh, sorry. Kristen Lash, sixty Sailview Court, Hampstead. Um, so I'm here today because I am a parent of a school-aged, well, multiple school-aged children, and I can tell you that it is a safety issue to add any more children to the east side of Pender County schools. Um, we are way over capacity and the numbers that were presented tonight do not include the two thousand homes that have already been approved in Island Creek that will be going to Thompson schools. Um, there's, we're not ready for it, we can't handle it. It's also my understanding that the sewer is at capacity, um, over on that side, and those of us that have been promised sewer in the county already have not been able to hook up to sewer because there's no capacity. But we're gonna add nine hundred more homes and give them access to sewer? That's not okay. Um, obviously, the traffic, I don't even need to talk about that because we all sit in it every single day of our lives. Um, the only other thing I would say is, when are we gonna stop doing this? I understand you can't stop progress, and I'm not for stopping progress, but I am for stopping things that are directly impacting our children, our families. We should not have to drive an hour and a half to go twenty-eight miles to work. Our kids should not have to wait hours over, you know, for a bus. They miss tons of instructional time, and now just the east side of the county has been placed on a schedule because we are so over capacity. Um, and those are things you have to consider. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, good evening, my name's Matthew Griffith, uh, sixty Sailview Court in Hampstead. Um, I'm not a resident of, of this area, however, I am a commuter on Highway seventeen. I have two current students enrolled at Thompson High School, um, and two students that will be future enrollees at Thompson High School. Been in the area for about ten years and the growth in the area, uh, is compounding exponential growth to the point where I feel like our current state of life, as far as the county is concerned, is, um, beyond capacity. And, you know, if we continue to grow, and, and again, I'm pro-growth, um, pro-progress, however, it should be organized and it should be, um, in a manner that makes sense. And, you know, I've heard comment today about how, um, you know, the, the builder has proposed land for schools and community amenities and things of that nature. However, the problem with that is everything funnels to the top in our high school. And, you know, the more, the more students you add across the entire spectrum is all going to come into a bottleneck, which is, you know, the current state of our high school. Uh, we currently have a seven A student body, uh, after the adjustment, and they're going to school every day and, and playing sports on three A facilities. Um, and that's unacceptable as a resident who moved here ten years ago with, you know, looking for the best schools possible, and, and this area had that. And, and I think it's fairly obvious to see that, the decline over the last decade of our school system and our county infrastructure, and now we're playing catch-up to the point where, you know, every, every branch of this county government is stressed. The Board of Education, I'm sure you are, you are as well. And I think that it makes sense to, to just take a step back. Now, I understand the by right, you know, that, that they can build what they can build, but allowing the, uh, extra, just for the sake of allowing extra is counterproductive to me. But I think we need to take a step back, allow our county infrastructure to catch up, and then look at additional growth. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Nate Carruthers.
Nate Carruthers, two nineteen Trade Winds Drive. Uh, I too, I'm not a resident of Wiley Branch, um, but I am a resident of Hampstead. Um, I, I don't exactly remember when, but it was probably last year sometime I sat in this room, uh, at another meeting that did involve the school board, and I believe, uh, correct me if I'm wrong here, I think it was you, they said there's like ten thousand homes that are already approved. Is that correct? Give or take?
Um, that might be a little high, but there are several thousand.
So it's not just your development that's adding to the schools. We have zero plans for new schools. I mean, what are we gonna do? It just doesn't make sense. And I know this is not directly related to the school board, but it is. Because if you think about the future, you know, property values, um, the reason why people move here is because partially, because, I'm a real estate agent, a lot of people move here because of the schools. Well, that's not gonna continue on if, you know, we can't put people in the school. And that's my biggest thing is the schools, honestly. Um, I think kinda, to caveat off what he was saying, it, it needs to be, uh, we need to be more proactive and not reactive in how we're doing things. That's all I got.
Thank you. Kevin Walsh.
Hey, thank you. My name's Kevin Walsh, seven thirty-eight Habersham Avenue. Um, I mean, the, the schools is a big, big issue. Uh, I don't know how many of you actually live in Pender County, but like they said, we could beat it to death, the schools are absolutely past capacity already. If there's eight thousand homes already approved, then we're never gonna catch up, right? That school, the school that's being built on Island Creek is years out still, we already passed capacity, now you're talking about adding eight thousand more houses, it just doesn't add up. Like they said, you gotta be a little more responsible with how we develop the county. Island Creek's gonna be absolutely slammed once the bypass is open and two thousand houses across the street from us are gonna be developed. Uh, the county infrastructure needs years and years to catch up. I know they said there shouldn't be a building moratorium, but really, there should be. Uh, we need to slow down, we need to, to take a thirty-thousand-foot view and see what is happening, and we are just catching up and not even catching up, just trying and tripping over ourselves to try to catch up. And we moved here for the quality of life, for the schools, and I've been here five years and I just see it slipping away, and, and it's just a shame, and we need to, to keep that in mind. Uh, let alone the fire departments, the EMS, can they handle the growth? Uh, we have a little fire department there, what is the plan? They have two thousand houses, then we're gonna have nine, nine hundred, we already have two hundred, you're talking thirty-one hundred houses for a little fire department. What's the plan for that? What's the plan for the sewers? The original master plan that was approved by the county by, uh, foursides, for Wiley Branch, changed, right? There was supposed to be sixty acres in the back that was supposed to be conveyed to us, instead, they sold it off to a developer who's been running dump trucks down the road for years. Uh, there was supposed to be other property that was conveyed to us, they sold it to that same developer, High Grounds Nursery. So the plan was approved with one thing, and then they just changed it, right? And that doesn't matter, I guess. Uh, our active spaces are, are laughable to be called active spaces, they are not usable for anything, you can't even walk across them. It's, it's absolutely un, un, unacceptable. Uh, I could beat the schools to death, like I said. Uh, what about an environmental impact study, right? There's six hundred acres of wetlands back there, what's gonna replace the ecological services of that six hundred acres? On a heavy rain, it doesn't even have to be a named storm, on a heavy rain, our, our, our ditches are overwhelmed, our pond is overwhelmed, the streets are flooded, the road, the, the yards are flooded. What's gonna happen when you take away all that watershed? That's gonna directly impact us. There's no way it's not going, going to impact us, and twenty feet buffer is, that, that's nothing. I mean, the area right behind Habersham is an absolute swamp, I've been back there, it is an absolute swamp, water, you're not even able to walk back there. So they're gonna fill that in, and what's gonna happen during a big storm, right? Nature's gonna reclaim that, and it's gonna be flooded again, it's just totally irresponsible. And, I mean, to, 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 to button it up, Asides has deceived us, has lied to us, has promised us a pool for four years, hasn't even broke ground on it, which he blames all of y'all, by the way. Um, he's lied to us, deceived us, sold us houses with big promises and has not come through for us. He's not trustworthy.
Guy Gruber, but two sixty Love Lally, over here in Hampstead. And basically, I don't live anywhere near Island Creek, I don't live but a mile or so down the road, but what I see every day on seventeen, i- i- it's unbelievable. It's gotten to the point of where my friends and I are talking about setting up a pool as to see where the accident that's gonna take place tomorrow is gonna be. Is it gonna be up towards Porter's Neck? Is it gonna be over here going towards Surf City? Guaranteed, there's gonna be one. It, it's an almost everyday occurrence. You put in another nine hundred homes, and I look at the traffic that's sitting out there on seventeen now, and it reminds me of back in the mid-seventies when I lived in New York. I was on my, my way home from the bank on Long Island Expressway, which we finally called the world's largest parking lot. Well, we were at a dead standstill, and this is when CBs were becoming very popular, and some guy got on his CB to make an announcement. Breaker, breaker, Smokey the Bear is getting on the expressway at Sacticos Parkway. And some other guy responded by saying that just what the hell, we need another car on this road. Nobody was moving. And basically, that's what's happening here. You talk about nine hundred and six homes. I look at all the apartment complexes that are taking place, you know, within proximity of, of three, four miles in either direction. You keep adding, adding, and adding. We have a, a new highway that's gonna open someday, in the meantime, we don't have the capacity to drive from point A to point B without, in a lot of instances, taking our lives, you know, in effect. know, in effect. The, I live close to the EMS squad, and these people here have what to do to get out, to make a call. I don't know why common sense doesn't prevail. I, I realize I'm certainly not against expansion. I'm not against increasing housing and all this, but everything has its time. If you turn around and get into an area where you can only accommodate food for 100 people, and you've got 200 people there, 200 people are gonna eventually die. You can only take care of what you've got, and we just keep adding and adding and adding, and it's like no concern. It certainly isn't a concern of the developers. And the residents, the people that live here, every day, I guarantee you, every day, there are a whole bunch of people that are saying, I wish I could get out of here. I love it here, but I can't live like this. And nobody should have to. And basically, I'm asking that you guys do something about it. Thank you.
Matthew Barbie.
Good evening. Matthew Babbitt, 799 Habersham Avenue. I'm pretty new here. Been here less than a year, not a local, but I'm not far into the area. I was one of the many first responders that came in for Hurricane Florence, 2018. I've seen the devastation that was in the area. There's been a lot of talk of infrastructure, traffic impact analysis, et cetera. I'm just, I'm not really looking for an answer immediately, but I just wanna make sure that evacuation modeling and simulation is considered whenever we take this totality of 900 more homes in this location into consideration. That's all I got.
Thank you.
Mike Ladetto.
Mike Ladetto, 605 Habersham Ave. I am a Wiley Branch resident. I just wanna first say thank you to whoever agreed to have the meeting this late, 'cause I'm probably in the minority, but I don't work normal business hours, so it's nice to be able to, be able to get here and have my voice heard as well. I agree with the decision that was proposed to vote against the current proposal. Everything that was outlined on the proposed conditions of approval slide of this gentleman's PowerPoint, I think that all needs to be addressed, whether it's by the developers, the lawyers, whatever it is. I appreciate everything that you guys are saying about trying, you know, with the schools, the different zoning, how many houses are here, there, whatever. The efforts are appreciated, at least by me. I can speak to that. But I think maybe, I don't wanna stand here and say try harder, but obviously, the schools, the traffic, all that stuff has been brought up. And if you guys really want it, maybe some more effort could be put in. Obviously, government resources are limited, so there's only so much they can do. Help from you guys and anybody else is also appreciated. Lastly, I never knew that the new proposal, I guess, is to have a completely separate HOA outside of Wiley Branch. That was news to me to be heard. I'm not sure if that was disclosed to anybody else. But personally, that kinda seems like an attack on us because of the pushback that we've given Asides and the HOA with a lot of things that Kevin Walsh has brought up, which is how our development and community was run and how it's still being managed. So it kinda seems like you guys are just trying to shut us out because we've given a voice to things that we want fixed and that should be fixed. It's all for the betterment of us as residents and the community and every family that's in there. It's not that we're just trying to be assholes about it.
Please, please address the board, not the applicants.
I'm just talking in general. But that's pretty much all I got, so thank you.
Thank you.
Kevin Miller.
Kevin Miller, 749 Habersham. Live in the Wiley Branch. I back up to the woods that they're talking about building on, just from being an outdoors guy who wants to see what's behind him. Like he said, there is a runoff creek that runs right through the middle of that, where you can see about 10 feet high at one time where water lines were. Now you go back there, there're pretty much heavy rain right up to your hip. The other thing is, is probably in the last year and a half, we've had about five or six accidents right at the entranceway, where cars have been T-boned or rear-ended, just putting a blinker pulling in. Adding 900 and something homes without a true traffic impact and widening that road is just gonna cause somebody to die. And the other thing is, is you can talk to the neighborhood that we live in, or go up the road to the other Asides neighborhood, there is nobody that will say anything. He has overpromised and underdelivered in every development he has done in this area. Between pools, open spaces, they were supposed to have creek access with kayaks and every, you know, access and everything else like that. No. Builds the neighborhoods, drops out. The only reason they are going forward with a pool and staking anything out now is because they want our support on this. They don't want us to fight back. It's been five years where it was the first 100 houses we'd have a pool. Then it was 200. He used to show up to the HOA meetings where he is the head of the board. Now he doesn't bother, just like he doesn't show up to meetings like this. He has no exceptions for our roads that are falling apart in there, that have only been there. You know, some of them maybe four years. We have sinkholes that are coming where the sewer grates are, where he just addressed when we brought it up in the meeting, but they blew it off in the HOA meetings. We've been trying to get stop signs because Habersham is like a highway already with our children playing on it. We get the runaround that is being turned over to the DOT. That was four years ago. Every year we bring it up, they say, reach out to the county. County can't do anything 'cause they're public roads, private roads. It's just gonna get worse and worse and worse as he builds all these lots and these homes. It's just about making money, get out and go with no community love like they try to put out there. That's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you. Jonathan Lima.
Jonathan Lima. I live in 812 Washington Acres Road in Hampstead. I live here in, in less, I'm living here like for less than, than five years from now. And when we decide to, to purchase our first home, me and my wife, and now we have a baby, we really looked excited about like the safety, the, the quality of the schools around here, and the, and the infrastructure that we, we were promised by the advertising. But a, as the time passes, like as, as the neighbor mentioned, it's just getting worse. So I understand that if it's based on the concerns and, and the claims from the community, the decision about the approval or denial of this project is already being made by the community, which is made by the people who lives here and care about this area. So I would, I also understand that it's time to, for everything, and it's time also to try to catch up about these promises not fulfilled in the past, about the overcapacity of, or taking care of the traffic. Nobody sat here, either way, like they, they are against the, the progress of this area. So i- it is, is, is a matter of conscience, I understand, not just a decision made by, by, by you board, but also what are we planting on this community to have? Like, when I talk to people who are generational from here, like they, they always say the same, the same type of complaints that I just heard, and I'm pretty sure like all of you also like are tired of it. So why don't we try to embrace these new developments, like, but try a different approach? Hey, let's build up first the benefits for the community, and then we, we will be grateful enough for your commitment in approving, in approving your, your, your development. So I, I, I understand this more than clear, this, this traffics, the, this problems that we're being pointed is, is more than enough for we look and care indeed for our community. And try the approach which benefits the community, not based on the promise, oh, 15 years from now it's gonna be the impact. Of course, we're talking about the present, the, the, the future plan is here. Is even like disrespectful, you try to, to, to just put some, some sparkling in, in a detailed planning and saying, oh, approve this, and then we'll, we'll get in front with now, without any commitment, actually. So please hear the community.
Thank you, sir.
Tara Williams.
Hello. Does it go low enough? Tara Williams, 74 North Ballistone Lane in Wiley Branch. I'm very nervous. Forgive me. Everybody here has kind of addressed the school system. Nobody actually looked at the numbers, though. So I looked up, like, he proposed, he was talking about the potential students. I looked up national stats. According to national stats, adding 906 homes has a potential to add in an extra 1,100 school-aged students. Okay? That's national stats. The school that's being, currently being built is slated to be ready, 27, I believe. I think their max capacity, their planned capacity is 2,312 students. So if you're gonna do these 1,100 students, 600 of which would be kindergarten through eight, plus the potential students from the other 2,000, as everybody else said, we're already over capacity, and even planning out five years, we're still gonna be over capacity. I was, as everybody said about the traffic, he was saying something about 5,100 to 5,400 trips. But then with 906 homes, now that's with 230-some-odd homes. With 906 homes, it's only gonna go up to 7,664. That doesn't make sense to me, being that it's gonna be three times more homes. So why is it less than double the trips in traffic? I don't know. My, my mind is going everywhere here. But yeah, and also, as everybody else said about the watershed, I'm on the backside, so the back of the development they're proposing is basically across the street from me. Half of my backyard turns into a pond with a half an hour of rain. So if they're gonna put homes in there, what's gonna happen with all that water? Most of us here in Wiley Branch and in the area moved here, a lot of us from out of state, for quality of life. We are moving away from congestion and overpopulation and the strain that it puts on our schools. And what we're seeing happening is everything that we were trying to get away from. So let's just kinda take that all into consideration. You know, the people who live here live here for the quality. And the more we overdevelop, that quality goes downhill. Ultimately, it's just not good. It's not good for anybody here. So, thank you.
Thank you. Jake Wire.
Hi, good evening. My name is Jake Wire. Live at 879 Habersham Avenue. Simply put, this is a poorly proposed community plan. I'm here tonight to express my deep concern regarding the proposed rezoning request adjacent to Wiley Branch subdivision submitted by Mr. Anthony Sides. The proposal demands close and careful scrutiny, as a significant increase in density presents clear and measurable risks. The impact on already strained traffic corridors, overcrowded schools, as everybody's mentioned, and the sensitive watershed cannot be overstated. The area in question contains extensive wetlands, which appear to be largely ignored on the current proposed plat map. Allowing the development of 906 homes in this location will result in acres of additional impervious surfaces, drastically increasing the risk of flooding for current residents. In response to the developers' representative claims that the project is needed to address the county's housing demand, yes, future housing is needed, but it must be developed in areas that are suitable for higher-density growth. That's precisely why we have the Pender County Future Land Use Map. If we disregard it in this case, what message does that send for future planning? I want to state I'm pro-intelligent growth and allowing private landowners to utilize their property to its best allowed use. However, the rezoning proposed benefits only the developer, who is attempting to purchase landlocked, inexpensive land, heavily affected by flood zones, and build at a density that is not currently allowed, in order to maximize its profits. The county must seriously consider the long-term negative consequences to its residents, especially those of us living directly adjacent to this site, before approving such an unnecessary ill-advised request. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
April Dunn.
Hi there. My name is April Dunn. I live at 151 West Broughton Lane in Rocky Point in the Wiley Branch subdivision. My property would back up to the proposed development. My backyard, well, first, I purchased my home in 2022 for $520,000. I was promised a pool and a clubhouse. I was told, I have a text message from my real estate agent stating that the pool would be completed for the summer of 2023. I have two small children that attend Topsail Elementary School. I relocated here for the schools and the quality of life. As we've heard, the school overcrowding is already an issue. I read recently in the newspaper that the, or the new elementary school on 210 is already going to be at or past capacity when it opens. So that's a major concern that I don't need to address any further. I'm also incredibly concerned about the, the increase in traffic. Island Creek Road is incredibly congested. It will, there'll be additional traffic once the bypass opens, and then I can't even imagine what the traffic situation's gonna be like if they added another 900 homes, which, you know, I mean, that's gonna be an incredible amount of additional traffic. I'm also highly concerned about the flood zone. If you will recall, in, when Hurricane Florence hit, the neighborhood to the east of us, which is further from the North Cape Fear River, had four feet of standing water in it for approximately a week after Hurricane Florence. That was in 2018. We're close, Wiley Branch is closer to the Cape Fear River than, than that subdivision, and we've already experienced flooding in our development. There's a ditch behind my home that floods anytime there's a rain. I've called the HOA, no response. They don't maintain the, the ditches or the cul-de-volts. Also, regarding the pool, we've been promised many, many things by Asides Construction that have not been delivered. Our road maintenance, our roads are too narrow. I checked, West Broughton Lane's still not turned over to, to the county for development because it's too narrow. Two regular-sized SUVs or two regular-sized pickup trucks can barely pass on Habersham Avenue or Wiley Branch. If there's a trash truck or moving truck or anything like that, people have to even drive into someone else's yard to get past. So there's no room there.
Thank you, ma'am.
That's it for signups, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Adams, and thank you for your comments. Let me just start with that everyone on this board is a Pender County resident. Some of us were born here. Some of us have moved here, just like you have, for our schools. Some of us sit in the same traffic that you do. So please know that we're all Pender County residents, and we, a lot of your concerns do resonate. Not all of them do. I think I would disagree with some of the things that you guys have said, but for the most part, we understand the concerns about the schools and the traffic and more people moving here. Some of your concerns regarding an individual, the developer, have nothing to do with what our decision is. Those are civil matters, and I'm sorry that you're dealing with them, but that's not something that this board, you know, deals with. Yes, we can't take that stuff into consideration on our decision. The, I would agree that I believe 900 homes in the area is a massive increase, given the, the, the development pressure we've seen in Hampstead that has really exploded since COVID, for a variety of reasons. We, you know, more and more people have moved here. We've seen a demand shift of people moving here, and they're moving here just like the rest of you. rest of you, many of you have, to get the schools and the quality of life. And we should protect that. But when we talk about 900 homes, even if we deny this, there's potential for homes to be built here. And that has nothing to do with the county commissioners, the planning. That has to do with the state of North Carolina and how North Carolina operates its statutes. And county government, including its body and Mr. Attorney, or please correct me if I'm wrong, we operate under those statutes. The state has most of the say in what happens in your county, whether you believe it or not. Roads are operated by DOT. There are no county roads in Pender County. No maintained county roads. Everything is managed by the state of North Carolina. The issues aren't 17 or 210, those are state roads. And so when you come to us to talk about what they're doing and why aren't we doing something, we cannot do anything. That is the state of North Carolina. The developer would have a traffic impact analysis, and that analysis would tell you what the state of North Carolina, NC DOT, would then tell that developer what they need to do and when to do it. Nothing the county can say about that. So as you see, you know, the stormwater, that's a DEQ, another state agency. Concerns about those issues, if approved, they would have to meet certain standards. We have certain standards as a county, as he mentioned, he doesn't like them. But if we approved that, they would still have to meet those standards, and that would not be approved by Pender County. That would be approved by the Department of Water Quality, which is a state agency. Same with wetlands, KAMA, or the National Wildlife Service has jurisdiction over those things. So all these layers of government, really, restrict the developer in what they cannot do, which has nothing to do with Pender County. Pender County sets ordinances of what you can and can't do with your land if you own it. We have the ability to rezone property through a legislative process, which is what we're talking about now. What the legislative process in this conditional rezoning does allow is for us to set conditions on many of the things that you identified, whether it's not building on the floodplain and putting even stricter stormwater standards in, or requiring certain buffers that are larger than what we've addressed. All these things that you're addressing could be done through a conditional reuse zoning, but it would have to, certainly, the developer would have to agree to doing that. Now, if they didn't agree, they would not be able to move forward. But usually, that's going to require a give and take to allow them to do that, because those things may cost money in their pro forma. I know you don't care about that. But that is how we look at things. We're trying to figure out how to manage this growth, is trying to find opportunities for schools, for utilities, for infrastructure. And when a developer comes to us, we've been saying no to a lot of developments here, but if they come and say, we are trying to do these things to help with these issues, that is really the kind of approach you would want to see from a developer, work, trying to work with the community. Obviously, it didn't work out. I have no knowledge of what happened, but we have to review the case as is. So I just want to kind of put that out there. There's a lot of concerns about many different things, of why we do this, why, we don't do many of these things that you're concerned with, and we don't have jurisdiction over them. So I just want to get that out there as we discuss this further to kind of generally and broadly address some of the concerns that you've had. Okay, I spoke for quite a while. Where do you guys want to go with this? Do we want to talk about the future land use map? Do we want to talk about density? Floor is open to you guys here.
I mean, as presented in what was the application, I know that the applicant spoke at length about other condition or other discussions that he had with, that they've had with the county. We can't consider those as presented and as, you know, applied for. It's not something that I would consider, even with conditions at the 906 homes. There's, both with the calculations from the county as well as from the applicant, I see that there can be, I don't see either of them. I think that it's probably closer to 376 homes that should, because of the conservation areas, that should have been excluded. So, you know, by right, fine. But some of the conditions that are put for buffers, it's residential to residential. There's no real public benefit to that. I don't see much public benefit to some of the conditions that are proposed. And then if we would go further, I think that there's a little bit of an overreach in, at the 906 homes, it's just a nonstarter.
Thank you, Mr. Keeler. I do want to point out that, you know, this area of 210, just like many of you live in Wiley Branch, was developed because there was a demand for that. And you're going to, we're going to continue to see developments coming to 210, whether we like it or not, whether you can say no to it or not, this is going to continue to grow. And so I just want to make sure that everyone is aware of that, that if you say no, that doesn't mean they can just, they won't build something, and maybe the guy down the street's going to build something. And we're going to be dependent on the Department of Transportation to improve those roads. Now, I believe that there is a traffic study or 210 corridor study occurring currently. Is that correct, or is that put on hold by the state of?
I believe DOT is studying it, and then also there's a traffic impact analysis associated with the school system on Highway 210.
Right. So they're, you know, they're aware, but obviously, we know they don't move fast enough. But I just want to make sure that, you know, as we move forward as a community, people are going to continue and will move here, and people are going to have property rights, and they're going to build homes. And they have a right to do that. It's one of the things that makes America great is our property rights. But I just can't stress that enough, that as much as you want to see things stop, I do foresee that it's going to continue, whether you have a ability to approve something or deny it. The property rights and what they can do out there is going to continue to draw more further construction of homes. Mr. Jordan, do you have any comments you'd like to make?
I'm just curious if sewer is available to this. Excuse the mic. I'm sorry. I'm just curious if sewer is available currently to this location.
Is it avail? I'm, I'm.
Sorry, is the question, is it available?
Yes, is it currently available to this?
I believe the applicant might be better suited to answer that question.
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Mr. Adams. Now, the 906 proposed houses is for the entire 600 acres, and he's leaving out 83 acres. Is that calculated into the density?
When you say leaving out 83 acres, are you referring to what Mr. Edmondson presented as a potential park site and school site?
Yes.
That was not, everything that's presented to you this evening is reflected on the site plan that's included in the board's packet and what was shown on the screen earlier does not include any dedication of land to the county for a park site or a school site.
Can you bring that back up, please?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Anyone else? Go ahead, Mr. Pitts.
Well, my thoughts are probably going to be unpopular, but I do agree with Mr. Buchanan in the fact that we're going to continue to see growth like this and probably in areas close to this. 2.1 miles to what will be the new bypass and roughly six miles to the I-40 interchange is exactly where residential stuff needs to be. The future land use map that the county is currently working to update is wanting to prevent sprawl, and I think by having this stuff close to Hampstead is doing exactly that, so.
I have trouble supporting the plan as it's currently designed. If there was a allocation of land that was approved by the school board or the county commissioners to, you know, provide infrastructure and opportunity for infrastructure, I think I would have, you know, and we could work, and seeing that, it doesn't seem like there's any time, or you ran out of time with doing through that process. So like I said, I have trouble just approving this without that in there, but I think that if it was and we could look at that further, that's something that I would entertain, not this, you know, making assurances, but, you know, the trimming of the density and trying to address many of the concerns about runoff and so forth with that aspect. I know it's a big ask. That's something I think that I might be inclined to be more in favor of, but just as it is, without those inputs in there, I have a trouble supporting it as is.
I do have one more question for Mr. Adams. As far as, and this is part of this, as far as the acreage for a school, how did we come up with 100 acres? Is that an arbitrary number, or? Just looking on GIS, and just to give you a little bit of background, South Topsail sits on roughly 40 acres, and South Topsail Elementary School sits on roughly 40 acres, and 20 acres of that is actually used. North Topsail Elementary sits on 30 acres and roughly 17 and a half acres is actually used.
Yeah, I had the same kind of question on that. Why is 100 acres like this default number?
100 acres seems like a lot of dirt for a school.
I would have to defer to the school system in terms of the land that they need. I would speculate that the high school is the need, which involves more space for athletic facilities, things like that. I'm putting it in speculative.
Department of Public Instruction dictates the size of the school, the size of the classrooms, the size of the school, and the population.
So the state of North Carolina.
Yeah, Department of Public Instruction. But I'd be curious to know where the proposed 83 acres are, because you can give a section that's extremely wet and becomes totally just not feasible for the county to develop. It would cost a fortune just to do the site work. So it could be 83 acres that they can't use to build and make it sound like they're giving us something great, when it would just be a fortune to develop.
Yes, absolutely. If you'd like to come back up and address the board with any, free their comments, addressing any of the comments, actually, that were from before, you're welcome to.
The proposal was to put it on the triangled area at the, it's a bit hard for me to do this without, but, along Island Creek Road, it was frontage. I mean, frankly, it was frontage. The western triangle that you see.
Okay, but the, I'm looking at the soils map. So. So what is the characteristic of the LNA soil? It's a silt loam. Is it wet? I'm looking at your soils map.
So that 33 acres where we proposed to designate school, 33 acres where the actual school site would go, we have an environmental, and again, you don't have this, we weren't able to give it to you. Is this track right here, so that triangle tracked on the existing site plan? As you can see, there are no wetlands on that parcel, no floodplain on that parcel, per field reconnaissance from ECS. They went out and did a wetland delineation.
I'm not talking about wetlands, though. That's, wetlands are characterized by the type of tree and shrub, et cetera.
And soil.
Okay, and soil. So what soil, so there's, what is the soil on that 33 acres?
I don't have the soils map in there. I'd have to defer to Mr. McDaniel to talk about the soils, if he's looked at the soils. But that is some of the highest topography on this entire tract. It starts dropping off as you go back. My assumption is, I think I heard somebody say, did you call out a name of a soil? Do you have a soil map in front of you?
I do. It's LNA. It says it's a Lakemont sil loam, or I'm looking at the wrong section here. The middle section, they actually did not soil delineate.
So I can't speak. Mr. McDaniel may be able to provide a little more input about that particular soil type, if you're interested.
It looks like it would cut across. They just blocked out. And then the MU, which I didn't look up. But I did have a question. What did you mention about the 10% pre and post runoff? It's in the UDL.
Yeah, so we, we were basically saying definitely the high-density portion of portions of this project be subject to, to that verbiage. But then the low-density portion per our state permit, low-density is not required to enforce or place stormwater controls for a project that meets low-density. So we were asking that the, I don't know, I believe it was two or three, I'm sorry, I can't remember the exact one, it's in front of me, that that just be included to be high-density portions of the project include what was referenced in the staff condition.
Okay, I understood it to be all new developments, requiring an NC DEQ stormwater permit.
Correct. We, so we would, and high-density would trigger, would trigger those aspects, and low-density do not require stormwater controls.
Okay.
The whole issue with the schools and the parking, like, we have no ability to review that, and I would believe that, you know, addressing Ms. Mosca's concerns, that if that was something that was, happened prior to coming to us, that the county would have the ability to probably do due diligence before, you know, entering into type of an agreement.
Yeah, I mean, it's, I think we're, it's just, it's just a shame that staff at whatever level, obviously, it could have not been a directed from planning staff, but at whatever level, staff didn't allow us to present concept two, along with concept one, just as a visual so you could see and we could get feedback and start these discussions. Because again, we're trying to help a problem. Again, we all know a development could go here, you know, as-is, 400, 300, 75, 400, 450 lots, and we're still not helping a problem where with this, we have an opportunity to try and add some assistance to that problem when it comes to traffic in schools. So it is a shame that we weren't allowed to, for you guys to at least see that in the packets. We wish that could have happened. So maybe that could have stemmed more, you know, more discussion. You guys would have been aware of it and maybe could have, you know, we could have fine-tuned a concept plan that incorporated those ideas into these ideas with our ideas. But, you know, we completely understand what you have to look at.
Yeah, we are in a tight spot, given the information you're trying to give us, but not actually being able to review that specific proposal that you would like to see.
Correct.
So we have to look at it as is, unfortunately.
I understand, yes, sir.
On that aspect, because I do, would love to have a further conversation, but I don't think that we are in that position to have those conversations.
I understand.
As a planning board and just an advisory board.
Yep.
Okay. Any more questions or comments?
Mr. Adams, just to clarify also, all roads would be built to DOT standards and presumably taken over by DOT at some point? And that would be the case in the existing subdivision also?
So the, when a development is built, there is an option to plat the roads as public right-of-way or private right-of-way? Our private road standard is that the roads be built to minimum DOT standards. So even if a road is not taken over by DOT, it is still intended to be designed to DOT standards. And not, not necessarily every road within the development would be taken over by DOT. They don't, for example, a cul-de-sac may be a difficult sell to DOT to take ownership and maintenance of that road.
Okay, as far as the roads, so road width typically on a, on a through road or a main, main road, that would be the DOT standards?
Yes, sir.
I'll make a motion if there's no further discussion. Any further discussion amongst the board body? Any further discussion amongst the board body? Entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to deny the conditional zoning map amendment and to make a finding of denial because the proposal is inconsistent with the future land use map and the following goals, objective, and policies within the Pender 2.0 comprehensive land use plan. Goal 5.1, goal 5.8, objective 4.6, policy 5.1B, policy 5.1C, policy 5.1V.
So we have a motion, and we have a second.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? I have one statement. I'm, I'm, I'm not going to, I'm going to vote in favor of the motion to deny, but if there was, if there was that, what I discussed with you, that was there in the, in the plan, I would have, maybe have a different opinion of that. But as it is, I will vote with the motion to deny.
Yeah, I think there would be a different discussion. Still, the 906, doesn't seem like it would fly, but it would be a little bit more.
And I also am in favor of trying to work with the developer to address these concerns, like keeping them out of floodplains, keeping them out of areas, because we can do that in conditional zoning, but there has to be a give and take. And if we say no, then they do exactly what the ordinance says, and some of those issues that you addressed may, may, you know, they don't have to comply with some of these conditions that we discussed. They just do exactly what the ordinance or basically the law says in Pender County, so. Anything else? Hearing nothing else. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries to, for denial carries. This goes to the Pender County Planning Board on July 14, or, excuse me, the Pender County Commissioners on July 14th.
And that meeting will be here in Hampstead.
Okay. Thank you. All right, moving right along. We'll give the folks a few minutes to exit the auditorium. If you guys don't mind, please, please exit the auditorium. We still have business to conduct here. No, sir. If you'd like to approach someone after the meeting, that's fine, but not at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Okay, item nine, discussion. Mr. Adams.
I don't have any items for discussion. I do want to thank the board members for coming to the meeting a couple of weeks ago and discussing the future land use map. And I also want to extend an invitation to anyone on the board, if they had follow-up thoughts or want to discuss the comprehensive plan further, please reach out to anyone on our team. We'll be happy to sit down at your convenience and go through everything and discuss the plan. We anticipate bringing it to the board in the coming months, so we certainly want your buy-in and want your feedback before we finalize it. That's all I have in terms of discussion items.
Well, the next meeting date, then. What do we have on the agenda?
The next meeting date is July 1. We will have at least one rezoning in the Hampstead area, I anticipate.
Mr. Jordan, you want to make a motion to where we should have our next meeting?
I'll make a motion that we have the meeting in Hampstead.
Hold on one second.
Come on, Mr. Jordan.
What is the agenda item, though? Like, what is it?
A conditional rezoning for townhomes.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No opposed. Okay, our next meeting will be July 1 in Hampstead at 7:00.
Yes, sir.
All right. I have nothing else. I'm sorry to be so verbose tonight, but I, you know, we have a lot of large audiences, and you hear a lot of misconceptions or things that are not, you know, how things work. I feel it's important to try to go back through how we talk about these things and our understanding of it so that they can understand, hopefully, and just educate the public, as many of them asked to be. Other than that, entertain a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.